Are you sneaking in looking at the other DI teams? Or is that a...
Not just random building material.
I got a copy of the rotation. I didn't bring...I only brought one though.
Oh, yeah, I didn't bring that.
Do you want me to go make copies?
I'll make it.
Yeah.
I'll have to get my keys.
I'll start with the other one.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Six.
Six.
Thanks for coming. Hopefully we won't take the whole time. But two issues that I've been emailing you about are: One, increase your credits for graduation. And I gave you a copy of what I'd emailed you earlier. And we'll start with that. We've talked in the academic committee in the past that most of our students, and we had eight periods, so it may be skewed a little bit. But most of our students graduate with 27-plus hours, some as high as 30. And the rationale, there's increase, especially their junior and senior year, especially open periods for students. Seniors at times can take two classes and that's all they need to graduate. They, you know, over seven periods, I have on there they can earn 28 credits over four years. 24 if they have a study hall each year. Many seniors currently only do two classes. Over the past few years, only three students have less than 22 credits at graduation. Did a little bit of a survey. Crestview is at 22. Leitoni, Spalston, Columbia United, and Salem 21. Lisbon at 20. Many elective courses, low participation. And students are encouraged, as they schedule, they start scheduling tomorrow, to take six classes and one study hall each year. So we talked about it in academic last year and this year, earlier this year. Policy, it happens to come up because of policy 54-60, I believe. There was graduation, now you need points because of the part of testing, if that stays around. But you need a certain number of points to graduate as well. Since the policy came up, I wanted to look at this again. And before we adopt that policy, perhaps go to 22 credits, see what your thoughts are. The plan to implement is below. I wouldn't start with this year's eighth grade class because they're already scheduling for next year's freshman. So it would be this year's seventh grade class. The credit we've added on to the elective of 56-40, bringing the total to seven. We have four math, three science, two social studies, four language arts. Am I right, Mr. Radinsky?
Mm-hmm.
Off the top of my head. The other concern I had was the Career Center. But you have to have eight credits to go to the Career Center, and they take eight credits at the Career Center. Now, we are not doing half the Career Center.
Correct.
However, if we did, they would still have enough to get the 22 credits. So with that said, before we change, that's a pretty major change in the policy. Is there any...
Are there any thoughts or ideas on what class you would like to make? Mandatory, I mean, the last, when I was on the board before, we did this with speech.
Right.
So there was kind of a plan.
Right.
That, you know, that's a nice option for a kid to do public speaking. It would always benefit almost everyone. Do you have any plans like that now for a class that you can narrow in on that we think would help all of the students? So to make it a requirement?
No, that's a good idea. We haven't looked at any particular class. We looked at different, we have some options that we like to encourage the students to take, like STEM, environmental science, especially with the new STEM grant that we got with the county. Some of those courses, we've offered some upper-end electives that we'd like the students to take. But, yeah, we have speech now as a requirement.
As a sophomore.
Yeah, and we, and that must have dropped off because we just started that again, didn't we, a couple of years ago?
Yeah, this is the second year, I believe, that we've done that.
Yeah, we've done that. So that's interesting. I didn't know it was done before as well. Yeah, we made that mandatory.
So are you thinking along the lines of just any generic credit to get to 22? Or were you thinking an individual class?
No, we're thinking any credit that...
Any generic credit.
What we like to do is push, you know, we have some great art classes. We also have some great electives now in the core classes, which fit under that credit. And that's, you know, the, one time we had three years of social studies required. The state has two. We had the global studies.
Four and three, actually.
Yeah, four and three. But right now, there is no plan to make a specific class. Mr. Radinsky, do you have a suggestion of a specific class? We had the ACT class at one time, that would be a good one, Dan.
Right. You know, that's something that we've looked at and continue to look at, you know, yearly. You know, as far as, you know, just like, you know, I think it's been four years, we added health to the junior high phys ed curriculum. So they spend half the trimester, you know, six weeks in phys ed, six weeks in health, because they weren't getting health until they were in 10th grade. So I think that was a key addition. The speech has been a key addition. You know, we've tried things like Mr. Minow mentioned, the ACT prep, you know, just didn't fly. We've done the blended learning health class. We're continuing to investigate the college credit options and, you know, provide those types of opportunities. And with our PE waiver, that frees them up to take an extra half-credit elective as well. So as long, you know, the other thing that we've done is we've rotated our home ec electives, you know, year in, year out, to make different ones available. So, you know, they get a good assortment. But we're always, you know, looking at, you know, the possibilities and what they're interested in.
I'm sorry, I think one of the issues, one of the problems is, is if we can, if we do a mandatory class, that would be good. However, it would have to be, I would think, except for the Career Center students. Because we're pretty logjammed, there's freshmen and sophomores years, with the health, the phys ed, the speech credit. So if I were their junior, senior, if they're not here to take it, we can't force the Career Center because they have just enough time to get their cores in. But it's a good idea. I would think that we want something later in their high school career to be the mandatory course. So, you know, it can be just something to think about. The ACT prep would be, but that's a half a year.
Right. And there's a good chance that that's going, the ACT is actually going to be one of the components that, you know, pathway to get a diploma in lieu of the 18-point system.
Right, that's a good point.
So, you know, it's going to become more important for them to get a higher score on the ACTs. Well, we have 28 possible, there's 28 possible classes through your four-year.
Four years, yes.
If we took it up to 22, that still is, technically you could have two years of six classes and two years of five classes and two study halls. Correct? And you still get your 22.
Still your 22.
So it sounds like it's certainly reasonable. The challenge is trying to come up with a class or a group of classes that...
Makes some progress.
Yeah.
Right.
Like, we could say the ACT prep sounds good, but you wouldn't want to make that a requirement for everyone because some kids aren't going to...
Right.
So, I mean, I always thought some kind of money class or learning how to, that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I'm...
I'm thinking, yeah.
You have a year, technically you have a year to come up with a plan.
With a plan, for that, for the course.
Without having to expand staff and looking at staff, the people that may leave.
Right.
Can you do this with, if someone leaves and you don't want to replace them, can we still do this? I mean, there's all that, there's all that long-range planning that has to come into play. But I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, like I said, our plan has been through, you know, we're at, towards the end of the original thought process. And that was to replace, not to replace teachers that retire. With Mr. Croce, he retired this year. He's going to be the last one of that plan to retire. Now, we, with the rules changing, we didn't foresee any more retirements for the next few years. But that could change. Though we're about to change our plan at halftime. And like you said, even on finance or, you know, some kind of practical mathematics course, we could code it, I'm looking at Lisa's EMOs wise. Even if we didn't have a personal finance, somebody with that degree, if it was in the math department, it could be a math course, but we'd focus on that. We could do that.
Won't you currently have personal finances part of US government?
You have the finance, it's six weeks. The state says it doesn't have to be exposed to. So it is part of that. We could expand that into being a little bit bigger of a class, but yes, we do. That's a state requirement. Some districts do offer as a separate course, but not for credit, correct? Because the law says just expose to. And matter of fact, Mr. Croce got an award this year, if you remember, for his work in that course. But that's a good point.
We had a finance class not a whole long time ago, about three years. So we have the textbooks and things to do that. Just like sociology, that's another one that we've offered from time to time and are equipped to offer.
Would that be the good one to offer half-credit and combine with the ACT half-credit?
Yeah, because like you said, it's probably be two half-credits that we would add. And that, like Mr. Dukka was saying, perhaps, you know, if you guys agree with it, we can, we don't have to put it in, we don't have to change the policy just because it's up. We can change it the next time. But if we kind of do a little bit of a study and we're leaning that way, you know, or we could change it now. I wanted to do it because we're doing the first readings tonight. And then continue to look at a good avenue for, I'm looking around and everybody agrees that perhaps a, some kind of make them take a course, make a course required, rather than, then would be a good idea.
How did it play out when you did it last time with the board? We made, we made it a required class. It might have went to half-credit at the time. We might have went on to half-credit and made speech a required class.
Yeah, and the one reason we did it was it matched up because of the phys ed waiver. Phys ed and health were matched up, but now you had phys ed without a match-up. So speech, like we said, we thought was a good idea, and that's how we matched those two up. And that's one of the reasons we went to offer it. But we look at different types of courses. They're expanding on the personal finance, ACT, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities.
Yeah, I would say if you go to 22, it's certainly a good idea. I would say you wouldn't want to make it a mandatory class right now only because I think we might have a harder time matching up.
Yeah.
Because of the freshman and sophomore level. But maybe there's something we could do down the road that would, you know, if you found a good class and we found a place to work in it, we could always make it a requirement then.
Right.
But 22 wouldn't go into effect till 2016, right?
The freshman year, you had the class of 2020.
So there is time to...
There was time, yeah.
Yeah.
You had the whole year of scheduling this time next year would be the...
So the seventh graders would be the first graduating class, that year's seventh grade.
Yep, yes.
And even with that change, you still have, you know, they still have the opportunity to have a study hall all the way through.
Yeah. I'm going to refer to Larry again. And Jen. So now that we have the policy there and what's in your packet is, I didn't change it to 22 until after this discussion. Do we have to make a change before the board, or we have to, when that policy comes up, do we have to make a change so that, or can we just wait till the next reading?
I think we can wait till the next reading because we're going to, we're going to actually approve it as final.
Okay.
Eventually.
So I was going to do that the next week.
And from the sounds, I don't think the 22-credit thing's going to be a big deal at all because you're almost 90-something percent already in compliance with that. I personally think though Larry was on to something. I think when we get the ducks in a row, I think we just need to be required.
Right, I agree.
Because, I mean, of substance.
I agree.
And I love the idea where if you can give them something that's going to help them once they get out of here.
Yeah, so we'll just...
I think that makes sense.
So I'll just make the, you know, they've been on the board before. So what I'll do is I'll just put it in the next packet. I'll change it to 22.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we can also, when you, when we do the next packet, we can always mention it when it comes up again on the agenda.
Good. The other item is cloth uniforms for our athletic programs. And the, I think Mr. Henderson needs one.
Very, yeah.
The, so what I have here, and as I said, we put these in, you know, in our drive as to follow. Because, you know, that's what we said before, you know, one good thing is to have consistency, but to make sure that, you know, Mr. Keeler, because he worked with my dad. My dad used to, one thing he used to always tell him was, you know, that place was good long, before you got there, it should be good long after you leave. So, so what reminds me is, you know, we've had some things go and just because of the change in administration or coaches or whatever, the uniforms become an issue. And to try to get a consistency, we look at a four-year rotation of uniforms. You have to rotate when they were bought, plus the, what I would say is a policy. Each rush hour sport may purchase a new uniform every four years. No varsity team may purchase uniforms through a booster club, fundraising activities, or any other means prior to the four-year rotation. However, I'm sure you commented, money can be raised for future uniform purchases. Uniforms that need replaced during the four-year rotation cycle will be purchased through the supplemental fund of that activity. And the AD and principal have final say on the uniform to be purchased. Factors included, but not limited to quality, style, durability, will be considered before the AD and principal authorize the final approval. And as coaches come in, and I understand, I was a coach, the one thing you want to do is you want to change the culture. You want to get a new, you know, change everything, come out, and that's great. However, and I keep saying this, I talk to a lot of districts. And most of the districts have their booster clubs buy their uniforms. But you also have to remember, they're going out to fundraise for those uniforms from the same people in a small community and the same businesses over and over again. And to the point where some parents have called me feeling that they have to purchase uniforms and it comes, is it pay-to-play now? Because the pressure is, and it happened this year, I won't mention the sports, but it happened this year in particular. So as we were looking at that, I said, maybe we need to, as a board, decide that, hey, this is what we're going to be, this is what we're going to start with. The one fine thing is that I did check some of these uniforms, and they have not been taken care of very well, and some missing. So I think the AD would have to tell us when their rotation starts because some sports may need them sooner than we thought. However, the, that's not a policy change, but more of a guideline. This is how we do things and it's, no matter who's the AD, no matter who's the principal, no matter who's the superintendent, this is how it is. Get it on, so what are your thoughts on that? Looking at Mike, because I know you guys do a lot of buying at LASSA. You guys do buy a lot of our uniforms and we appreciate it.
Man, they don't consult me, but yeah, they do spend a lot of money.
Yeah, which I really appreciate.
The original five-year plan, I think, is too long. I like the idea that if you play a sport for four years, you at least get one crack at a new uniform.
Right.
As far as funding it, having private donations are great. But I hate that it would have to fall on the parents to buy the shirt every year or shorts, whatever it may be, for the same reason you cited. At what point is it pure donations? What point is it pay-to-play? But it's hard to turn away donations, so.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Good.
Well, out of curiosity, I know it's not a really completely relevant subject, but like when we look at our school buses, and I love the idea, and I think this is, I think we're talking philosophy here, I mean, obviously, because, you know, who knows? There's a lot of talk about different donation things that are already out in the grassroots for the new, new programs that are coming around outside of the district's money, and I love that. But like, when we look at our philosophy on the school bus, you know, spending hardcore nuts-and-bolts money, which, that's what you are. Like, as far as the school buses, we're, you know, we've got a new school bus, we're going to think about getting more school buses. Is there going to be a time when we're done with school buses and also with uniforms where the cycle would be a breather? Where like, okay, soccer got all their new uniforms, volleyball got all their new uniforms, basketball got all their new uniforms, you know, football got all their new uniforms. Now we're four or five years within this program. Is there going to be a year or two where there's breathing? Where the district's not always coming up with more money for another uniform? And not only that, but when you look at the aspects of it, and I take a little bit of offense when people say, oh, you pay the player, okay. But what happens when you have the constantly evolving world of helmets? And if you guys go online, I mean, the helmet world is evolving sometimes every month. And I think it's wonderful, you know. Me personally, I had, you know, in the 80s, when you had a concussion in football, it wasn't, they don't know the knowledge they have now. So when you have things like that coming up, or different pad structures, you know, it seems to me that the modern pad system that the boys are wearing, when we played, I mean, we had these big, huge, I mean, it seems like everything's becoming much more sleek and high-tech and polyplastics that I don't know anything about. Now, if we're never having a chance to breathe and we're always drowning to try to accomplish this, when does it come time for the big stuff, like helmets or...
That's a different budget, that would be different. We order that, this is for cloth only.
Cloth only, okay. Now, when you're looking at the cloth, and you mentioned quality and you mentioned different things like that, now is it stitching versus like, you know, numbers that are stitched versus iron-ons? Versus, I know one of the problems we have right now is fading. So are you going to have different companies that are going to present to us?
And that's why I put the AD because, you know, I don't want the, the AD and principal have final say, and that's why I put quality on there, durability. I think for them to oversee, to make sure that it is quality, like you said. Because that's one of the problems, when I went through the inventory, I was thinking, and the rotation isn't as easy as to start off with because, from this sheet, because some have been cheaper or worn harder, not cleaned properly. Baseball pants, it looks like they were, you know, that they've been through wear and tear probably because baseball is a little rougher on the pants. But the, that's why, that's why that last one's in there. The AD and the principal will make the final decision to make sure it's durable and, like you said, stitched or what, whatever would be more, last longer.
Well, the reason, I guess the reason I would be in favor of a rotation, and it doesn't have to be five years, like Mike said, it could be three years. I just would want to make sure that, number one, we can afford it. And number two, that an extroverted coach comes in or a coach with a lot of connections comes in and gets new uniforms every year. And that's great, except that money's usually coming from the community and that's usually, could be taken away from some other fundraiser that we're trying to do. I just feel sorry for the people that are all, and you're probably one of them, that are always, and you are too probably, that are always getting hit up.
Yes.
So that would be one reason I would like a rotation, just so that we would have some idea of how we would budget. Secondly, the other thing you could look at is, some of these programs could afford to buy their own uniforms. And I know they, I don't mean that negatively, so that's another thing to consider. Maybe football, they're on a little different rotation because the uniform gets beat up.
Baseball.
And they can afford their own. But maybe the non-revenue sports, you have to have a little tighter control because they're probably going to have to fundraise for theirs or we're going to have to take it out of the general fund because the athletic fund is not making enough revenue to support that. So it's a couple of different...
Yep.
I really think the main thing should be some kind of logical way to budget your expenditures and to keep it semi-reasonable as to if the programs are getting the same, I guess, treatment with their uniforms.
And as far as missing uniforms and stuff like that, that's just, that's, that's whose fault it is. I mean, that's just an inventory issue.
Right. Right. And like I said, when I went through here to try to devise one, and this is good because we'll go back and we'll revamp this and look at the revenue. Sit down with Johnny Mac, Matt Woodoff, and Mr. Radinsky. And we'll look at a possible rotation, actual rotation. These are kind of the guidelines. Underneath, I'll put an actual rotation by sport. For example, girls' soccer, we'll probably have to have uniforms this year, obviously. It's the first year of the program. And we'll take a look at that and then we'll bring it back to, so there's guidelines and perhaps some differentiation between, I like that, the revenue and non-revenue.
So girls varsity basketball looks to me like it would be the next one on this list. They were bought in nine and 10.
John and I talked a little bit about rotation. And he told me the worst uniforms are the basketball team, not just the girls.
In total.
In total. So if we start the rotation soon, we were going to start with them. And we did talk about needing soccer uniforms since we will be going to two teams. So unfortunately, this year, we might have a little bit more of an expense to get those sports up and running. And then hopefully next year, we won't have to take three individual sports at the same time.
And when it says the school, purchased by the school, Jen, does that mean out of the athletic department budget?
Either athletic, general fund, or supplemental.
So it could be either of those?
It could be any of those, yeah. Because in the past, we have purchased them through the athletic fund. Some of them have actually raised the money themselves, put it in the supplemental, and we've paid them out of the supplemental. The non-revenue sports, obviously, most of that comes from the general fund. So if they, we might have paid for it out of the athletic fund, but we would have had to do a general fund transfer to bring the fund balance back to zero.
What's that?
What is that? Baseball.
Baseball. Jim. So Jen, could you do that? Could you and Johnny Mac get a rotate, somewhat of a rotation?
Yeah, I can sit down with John next week and we'll get a, we'll get a rotation down.
And then I'll add it to this.
And we'll get it together. We can, we could probably go in and add another column to this spreadsheet and put the rotation in.
The actual rotation.
The actual rotation.
And then we'll come back, next month we should have it.
If you do the basketball program, it could be amazing because of the football, you know. We'll do a little break before we start.
Yeah, thanks you guys for coming around, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Does that end?
Yeah, we'll take a little break, a few minutes. And we'll just get that together and I'll send it an email and then we'll talk about it next month.
All right, that sounds good.
Jen, how do you decide when account it comes out of?
What account it comes out of?
I mean, let's say one of our sports. Who goes to a rotation? 6:30, call order, pledge allegiance.
I didn't realize it was that late.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the municipal liberty, justice for all.
Hold call, Jennifer.
Mr. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Hendricks.
Here.
Mr. Dukka.
Here.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Motion for approval of minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Dukka.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes. We'll now move into Jennifer's treasurer's report.
Okay, we have both accounts payable, as well as the board reports, which are in the financial reports. The only thing I have is a slew of donations, and I will read them. We have two donations for Dr. Conrad's scholarship fund, from 500 from John and Christine Conrad and 500 from Margaret and David Conrad. $2,000 from the Eagles for the Eagles Scholarship Fund. $50 from the American Legion for the softball team. $250 from the VFW for the softball team. $100 from the VFW for the track team. $100 from the American Legion for the track team. $250 from the Class of 1964 for the Perkins Tortora Scholarship Fund. $50 from Diane Perkins for the Perkins Tortora Scholarship Fund. 300 from the Little Bears for the Bear Paw Field Stencil. And the PTO has donated 150 for choir fund, 200 for the high school principal fund, and 150 for the Bear Paw Field Stencil.
Well, I, I think after that healthy list, we're very proud of you from Leitoni, a very giving community. Lisa, do we have anyone signed up for public?
Motion.
Oh, motion, motion to...
Boachel.
Second.
Second.
It's okay.
Move out of treasurer's report and into public participation.
Let's do vocal.
Real motion. No, real call.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion. I need a discussion. You're good, any discussion.
Discussion on treasurer's report of all those donations? Anyone want to discuss the donations?
Vocal.
Hold call.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Dukka.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Now you're up.
I do have two folks for me to go. We have Lori Marston on Spirit Bus and Andy, he's going to be speaking.
Awesome, very good. Lori.
Hi.
I'm Lori.
First one Pilates class.
I'm Lori Marston, I'm the afternoon front attendant, sorry, front door attendant. I just have a letter that I'd like to read, it's very short, and along with a signature page, I'll explain. Dear Mr. Mino, Mr. Radinsky, and all LaTonia Board members, on Friday, March 6, 2015, a Spirit Bus was taken to the boys' basketball tournament held at Western Reserve School. Thirty-four kids rode the bus and behaved very well. They, there were also five chaperones, including the bus driver. The kids abided by the bus rules given by the bus driver Jerry, both to and from the game. While watching the game, the LaTonia students behaved in a very dignified fashion and did us proud as bear fans. We understand the cost for riding the bus was paid for by the following people: Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Rowley, Mr. Barquette, Mr. Mino, and Mr. Votak. We would like to thank you for your generosity and thoughtfulness, it is much appreciated. Please see attached thank you from students who rode the bus. Chaperones, Michelle Votak, Cleone Smith, Chelsea Sarrowine, Lori Marston. This is just a, a page that they signed saying thank you, and I, of course, want to thank you as well. That was, I obviously rode the bus, everything went well. If you were at the game, it was hard to behave, even for me, because I was loud, but that's all. Also, just while I have your attention, I also very recently started teaching Pilates here at the school for staff only, and I wanted to explain that a bit. People, staff members that come give a donation of their choice, and we collect donations for a month, and then we choose as a group, a charity to give that to. And for this month, we are giving it to the Kidney Foundation, and so far, it's going very well. It's from four to five , 10 after school, and I want to thank everyone who was involved in allowing that to happen. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. That's a nice shirt, Steelers.
Thank you.
And then Andy Pettit, would like the floor?
I'd like to beg to run this through the shirt. I just wanted to say, October, April 21st, I'm doing an event for the students, we're going to give all the kids a free breakfast, and it's part of a grant that the cafeteria received to increase breakfast participation, and I wanted to invite, you know, everybody here and the board to come to this, April 21st, starts around 7:30 in the morning. We're going to do like a food show for the kids, so they get an idea of all the breakfast items that we have available, what else they can do. It's nutrition education, and we've got Unidairy coming in with their cow costume, I've got some work with support coming in for the nutrition group. It should be a pretty good time, so just wanted an open invitation, we're doing free breakfast, so come by, start by April 21st, Tuesday.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy. If there's anyone else that would like to speak, then we're going to move into old business.
You have the student achievement report, Mr.?
I do.
Okay, student achievement report.
No, old business.
Old business first.
There's no old business. So then we're going to the student achievement. I don't make sure I gave it to them, I forget sometimes.
You did.
The list is long and distinguished this time for student achievement. Columbia County Student Arts Show was held at the Career and Technical Center, 11 schools participated, and 100 artworks representing LaTonia. The 7th grade was Samantha Longkirk, who entered a charcoal rendering, she received reserve best of show second place. 9th grade was Lindsay Rance, received honorable mention. Alexis Knight from 10th grade, honorable mention. And 12th grade, Rachel Power, reserved best of show. Rachel Power was also selected for the 2015, 26th Annual Franklin B. Walters Scholar Scholastic Award, this is a county award, each school counselor nominates a student.
I'm going to interrupt there for a second, that's only one in the county, and this is what, the 24th or 26th? Last year was LaTonia's first winner, and this year we have a second, so we have back-to-back winners for that award.
We had a couple of entrants in the Knights of Columbus Drug Awareness, Madeline Sari, is that how you say it?
Sorry.
Sorry. Lower Division Drug Awareness, and Regina Cornbaugh, upper division alcohol awareness. Students were recognized on February 25th award ceremony. Mitchell Baker selected to participate in the All-Star Band Show at Crestview High School on March 28 at 1:00 PM. We had several students selected to the All-Star Choir, Anna, how do you say your last name?
I don't remember.
De, De Jero Lamo?
De Jocamo?
I don't know, sure. Dana Hackney, Savannah Fox, Robin Power, Brianna Lutmers, Corey Bradman, Andrew Drone. These students will perform on March 28 at Crestview beginning at 2:30. The 2013, 14-boys basketball team did very well, they made it to the second round of the playoff, hosted the first-round playoff here in LaTonia, was that the first one?
First time, yeah.
In a long time. And they won that, they lost to Western Reserve, but they played a great game, came back at the end. Trent Ferry was named Columbia County Player of the Year, and several other players got honorable mention. Maddie Stice School, 5th grade, 5th grader finished 6th overall in the county spelling bee. LaTonia Village Schools hosted the Ohio Region 13 Destination Imagination Challenge on March 7. We had four teams participate, a 2nd grade team, 2nd, 3rd, 4th grade team, a 6th grade team, and a 7th grade team. 6th and 7th grade won their challenges, advanced into the state competition in Mount Vernon on April 11. 3rd and 4th grade team finished 2nd. 2nd grade team, Evie Hinkle, Will Henderson, Zachary Davenport, Sophia-
Pulsini.
Pulsini. 3rd and 4th grade team, thanks Mike.
Coach.
Max Tullis, Case Henderson, Todd Duke, 6th grade Haley Brock, Olivia Clark, Katie Supple, Delaney Roller, and Maya Dolan. 7th grade was Emma Caitlin Bethone, Erin Callahan, Anna Bethone, and Caitlin Losser. Destination Imagination is a nonprofit group, organized, is organized to inspire students to become innovators and leaders, and the program is project-based. Congratulations to all of them.
Thank you. Great job. Yeah, a lot of letters going out.
Move into the superintendent's report.
All right. Hard to believe that we're starting the final grading period next week, and I know the students that are here are pretty excited about that. The park air and OGT testing occurred over the past month. We want to thank the teachers for their time and effort to ensure a successful testing experience. I also want to thank Mr. Klopsaddle, he not only did technology assistance day each day, but we had two servers break down, we talked about it at a work session a couple while ago about our servers need new servers, well two broke down the Friday, and we had to test the next week. He spent over 30 hours over the weekend working on those. And we want to congratulate Mrs. Markovich for the release of her first novel titled The Waiting Room. That's one of our teachers, that's quite an accomplishment. I do have several guests here tonight, and I promised the girls that I'd get them out early. Recently, LaTonia band performed at Disney, and Danielle Skaggs, Taylor Howe, Emily Bingham, and Amber Campbell are here to make presentations to the Board of Education, so.
So, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak at tonight's meeting. On behalf of the students of the LaTonia band and our directors, we would like to present the trophy we received performing in the Disney Festival Character's Parade to LaTonia School District. The parade took place on February 13th of this year at the Magic Kingdom in Orlando. We would like to thank the Board of Education, administrations, teachers, parents, and community members that supported us in this endeavor. The band is very grateful to have had an opportunity that many schools do not get to get, and we could not have done it without the help of everyone mentioned. A very special thank you to the band boosters and our chaperones for giving us their time to make this trip a success. Finally, good luck to Mitchell Baker, who will be performing with the Columbia County All-Star Band at Crestview High School on Saturday at 2:30 PM. And remind everyone of our final concert at the Spring Arts Festival on May 18. We would also like to extend the invitation to each board member to attend our band banquet free of charge on Friday, May 15, here at the school. Do you have any time to?
Thank you.
That's awesome.
President there. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, great job. Okay, also, tonight we have Doug Jones, the district representative for the Columbia County Career Technical Center, providing our update, which we read as also a handout. Thank you, Doug.
Good evening, everybody. Instead of, instead of reading to you about accomplishments of the LaTonia students, I passed a handout to all of you so that you can see for yourself. I did want to point out something on the handout, number three, it's a brand-new class down there, Landscape and Environmental Design. Some of you may know John Garwood from the Crestview School District, he's teaching that class. We had a chance to go see everything that he does down there with the students. It's the first year we had that class down there. There's two LaTonia students taking it right now. They have to do a lot of things as far as learning how to use different equipment, large pieces of equipment. And something I thought was interesting, when I was in school 100 years ago, we used to use a driving, driver's training simulator to learn how to drive. They have a program, have a program to learn how to use all the equipment, so that they get used to the controls and everything before they actually get on the equipment. They have to take tests on the equipment, they have to pass those tests on the equipment, just like you would a driver's test. But it was really interesting, because it's something new down there. And I'll talk a little bit about sophomore visitation day, but there's several LaTonia students that have put in for that same program again next year. In reading what some of the teachers have said, Michael said a little bit earlier, you can really be proud of LaTonia students. When I talk to the instructors down there, I never get a bad word about any of them, and seeing what they write, you know, provides you to, so that you can see what they're accomplishing down there, I, you know, makes me feel good about that. And lastly, when the school year started last year, there were 29 LaTonia students that were going to go to the Career Center half-time and full-time. That number dwindled down to 22, so seven students came back. During sophomore visitation day this year, the number is 29 again, just, just so that all of you know. If any of you are interested, before you leave tonight, I have a copy of who is going and what they're going for. A large number of those students are going for welding and the automotive technician career cap down, down there, so. Other than that, that is it.
That's 29 juniors and seniors, Doug.
Yes.
How many sit in that clip in those two classes total?
Oh, let's see, juniors going, it's 50, 50, there's still 60, and there's 43. Yeah, so there's about 100. There's only 43 in the senior class.
29 of 100 of our kids are going to C C T C, that's what we're saying.
That's over 40, yeah. It's 25, yeah, you're right, that's a quarter, 30, even higher, 30 percent.
Doug, out of curiosity, when you talk about like the welding, is there a program, so like when these kids are done with that program, they can jump into like the trade union to get, is there like a bridge?
Yep, they already are, Michael. And what they do, they have people from the trades come right down to the school, and a lot of the students, they're, they're getting entry-level jobs at a very good pay. And the tradespeople come down to tell us, the biggest, the biggest issue, we've talked about this before amongst all of us, the biggest issue with the kids getting jobs is passing a drug test. And the people from the trades, the business people, they're going down there telling them, you know, how important that is, because they are not going to get hired. That trend has turned around, and they have people right now that are going into career positions, and that number, that number's trending upwards.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it is.
It is, that's great. Thank you, Doug. Ending with a, real quickly, or as quick as I can, the officers speak, I had the opportunity, I went down last week, I want to thank the board for letting me go down to the subcommittee hearing on school finance, very interesting experience, I was telling it beforehand. I had the opportunity to speak with the Ohio Primary and Secondary Subcommittee about the Miami budget, the budget proposal will reduce our funding $68,000. I'm just going to kind of review a little bit of what I did in my testimony. I will have to say that it was quite an experience, and I know that Kevin and I talked about it yesterday, or the day before, and I know he's called Representative Ginter. He's been nothing but positive, wanting to help the area in education. He actually left what he was doing to come down and hear my testimony. He arranged for a 30-minute conversation, 30 to 45-minute conversation with Tim Keen, with me. Tim Keen's the Director of Office and Budget Management. So, this is the guy who wrote the budget for the whole state of Ohio, education's a small piece, and he took time out to talk to me for 30 to 45 minutes. I'd have to say because of Representative Ginter's relationship with him, with the, that he could do that. Matter of fact, and Chairman Cup is actually neighbors in the, is at the Rife Tower, Rift Tower, is neighbors with, if this was his door, his cup would be the TV. That's how close they are, so they go back to the same office every night. So, Chairman Cup, Ranking Member Phillips, and members of the Primary and Secondary Education Subcommittee, my name and my proposal to hospital 64. Lieutenant exempted is Billy's School District, and comprises 22 square miles and includes LaTonia Village, Washingtonville Village, and Salem Township. The median income is $29,000, and the school district has 7 of 14 students, K to 12 campus, completed in 2002. Forty-eight percent of our students are on free and reduced lunch, and classified in Quintile 1, which is supposed to be where the money is, that's, the budget proposal is supposed to put most money in Quintile 1, but as I talked to Kevin, I'll get to that. Rural high, high student poverty and small student population. The budget as it is now proposed has a tremendous impact on the LaTonia schools. The budget reduces the state aid by $68,000 a year for two, the next two years. Even with a projected 4% increase in property values, which will raise 11,500, the loss to the district is over $56,000. This could have a tremendous sacrifice, or tremendous impact on a district that sacrificed to live within its means after several levy failures. LaTonia staff and community pulled together to be efficient and effective. The FTE for the district has been reduced 32% from the first year the levy was attempted until today. We've, we've cut from 2008, now some of that ARA money and some of the funds, but we've reduced our staff nearly 30%, 30%. The staff did not receive pay increases for seven years, administrators took pay cuts, positions were realigned to reduce, personnel in several programs were discontinued. However, the students continue to flourish academically. The LaTonia schools finished in top 100 districts according to the state's value-added indicator for three consecutive years, and the LaTonia's performance index has increased seven points over the last five years, which in a recent study earned us a ranking of 13th out of about 610 school districts. The district goes on to help our area and Ohio manufacturing leader as well. They, we approved a 10-year abatement in 2002, which brought 40 jobs in the area, and the company was purchased in 2012, and we awarded another five-year abatement, and the district approved an additional 10-year abatement for a $33 million expansion project last year. As I mentioned, LaTonia is in Quintile 1, we're the 116th poorest school out of 610 districts in Ohio. If you look at the form, if you receive, we receive no replacement for 10-year personal property tax, and receive no guarantee in fiscal year 15. The study showed in the budget that those were the reasons your funds would be cut. We don't, however, we don't get, lose, we lose money with the proposal, even though we don't meet any of those criteria. District, it reduces the budget equal to one mil a year, roughly one mil. We, 68,000, we figured a mil is $71,000 a year, so it's roughly a mil. This is, the district receives 68% of its funds from the state, and has done many things to be good students of that money. We have learned to live within our means, but we are now faced with deduction that may be catastrophic. We hope you examine the form and recognize the efforts of LaTonia schools to be a role model for doing more with less for the greater good of the state, but more importantly, for the students of this amazing community. In conclusion, the proposed budget will reduce two mils over two years in LaTonia, four other local, four other rural school districts in small populations, and Columbia County will also see a reduction in funds. LaTonia is a close community that cares about its students, school district, each other, and state. This is reflected by a recent resolution issued by LaTonia Village Council stating their concern about the school funding budget proposals in House Bill 64, as well as our willingness to approve tax abatements for businesses. The attorney acknowledges other rural communities graduates hard-working, productive citizens each year. Vice Admiral Tony Less, who was the first commanding officer of the Blue Angels in Mizzou, Lyssam, and Cusa, the head of the fetal Treatment Center at the Akron Children's Hospital, who recently received world recognition for doing twins holding hands last summer, are examples of just two of many graduates from our district. LaTonia, as well as other schools with low student populations like those in Columbia County, are the backbone and spirit of our state. Yet the budget reduces the funds for these schools. In fact, 67% of all school districts under 1,000 students will lose money under this proposal. Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions? I ended, but I'm going to end here with just a few more facts, I'm going to pass this around. Did you get one of these, Jen?
Actually, I gave my copy back to you, because I wrote a couple notes on it, remember? I'll take another.
Yeah.
One more?
Yeah, Mike, we can share too, you and I. First, I'm going to, full disclosure on the data. I will say that I collect a lot of data. I enjoy doing it, I look at it. I wouldn't have been able to collect it this quickly without the help of Bill Jellin. Bill is another Columbia County graduate too. So we talk about these small schools in Columbia County losing money. Bill is MrExcel.com. Kevin and I wanted some more data, and Bill emailed us the next morning, about 6:30 a.m. So, we appreciate that. As well as Leetonia graduate and current board member Larry Duco. Larry helped with the chart as well, and I appreciate their help. The funding formula shows several trends that are not favorable to small school districts and benefit school districts as the student population increases. To your left, the first section of data illustrates the percentage of schools losing money when districts are grouped by student population. When I talked to Mr. Keen, he said that they did a study, but he found it interesting that my study showed that because he said that they were to ensure that it would not hurt small districts. So hopefully, after the discussion and the data, he was able to look at that. But if you're under 1,000 students, 67% of those schools will lose money. There's 136 districts in Ohio. And maybe I should back up a second. I started this study looking at similar districts in the state. You go by similar districts. So I took the similar districts under 1,000, and seven out of eight were losing money. Then I went to all the type 1, the rural low-income, 73% were losing money. That's when I called Bill. I said, "Bill, is there any way I can get the whole state and see if this trend, what this trend looks like large scale?" So, it's amazing that if you look at the 1,000 and 2,000, under 1,000 and 2,000, they're the only two categories that more districts lose money than gain money. Also, interesting enough, that's 58% of our school districts are in that small category. And I didn't realize that till the study. And then the change in 16 is the trend's consistent. However, the losses may be less, but the trend's consistent. So, the next thing we looked at was, as I'm looking through there and looking at the data, it seems like the districts that are big are getting a lot of money, and the districts that aren't, that are receiving money aren't receiving a lot of money. So the state likes to use per pupil. What are you getting per pupil? You know, they find you $57 per pupil. Well, as I went through there, and you can see on the graph below, if you're under 1,000 students, over 10,000 students, the trend is very, you know, evident from that graph. What you're getting per student, the average per student, we're losing money, but the average per student for under 1,000 is $38. It's $580 more. If you gave me $500, if you gave us $580 more for all 714 students, that's $416,000. So, this doesn't seem, so these trends, as I say, seem unfair to small school districts, whether it's per pupil. So we try to look at it two ways. Is it just a percentage of losing? How much is that small district losing? So like I said, the final one is, and it's not on your sheet there, when I was with Kevin, Kevin said he covers four rural districts. United, South Range, Leetonia, Westbridge, all losing money. So, we looked at that. There's eight categories in Ohio. There's two for rural, two for a small town, two for suburban, and two for urban. If you just take the two rural districts, 71% are losing money. Compared to the remaining six combined, only 30% are losing money. In fiscal year 15, 16, trend continues in 16, 17, 60% and 27%. So if you're a small rural district, the odds are against you for this budget, even though I was told when I talked to Mr. Keen that there was not any discrepancies by school size. So, just wanted to share that with you, where I was last week, make sure you, what I was sharing.
When will they finalize it, Rob, or?
That's why we went down early. The Subcommittee is now, it's going to have changes now. Probably not till, well, due in July, right?
July 1st.
July 1st. Yeah, so July 1st, so it probably won't be finalized till close.
They've sometimes gone into June. It just depends on where they get, because they have to take a vote on it.
Did they ask you any questions?
Yeah, they did. They asked, first of all, they said anything we can tell their districts to be efficient. And then I said, "Well, we're probably at the breaking point now. We unfortunately can't offer some classes that schools around us can." And I said, "I think the more the question is," and that's when you're driving home, I think I should talk about charter schools. But I said, "I think you need a safety net for the small schools since they're the ones that are really losing money. If you're going to use this formula, there's got to be some kind of safety net because we learned within our means for X amount. We're okay with X amount, but not X amount minus one mil." So that's what the questions were based towards. Any suggestions? And also asking us what we could suggest that others do, save money.
It also seems, in my opinion, like the smaller rural schools like ourselves could almost become a role model. And I mean, without pointing fingers, but when you look at the major metropolitans of Ohio, which I think there's seven of them, and you analyze any one of the seven school districts of the city, it seems like no matter how much money you put towards the district, it does, and there's a couple examples without mentioning names. And then you look at a smaller district, not just ours, and I'm not just tapping our own hat, how we're in the black now, and everyone came together, you know, union, administration, community, everybody came together. But now also, different rural communities, superintendents are calling RV, and we're swapping ideas. You know, hey, people, pay-to-play doesn't really work. This might work, this might, you know, bringing the people into the fray, watching your pennies, knowing that the state's not going to get you any more money. But I think a lot of times these politicians are wonderful people, and they had the best intent, and things look great on paper. But it's guys like Rob that are stepping up to the plate and going down there and saying, "Hey, listen, there's cracks here." You know, the districts that could really be a role model, because you know, if you take away the big seven to 10 districts, you know, you have a lot of us little districts, and now we're going to be punished. And I think everyone in this room knows, I mean, these last five years have been brutal to get where we are, to take a mil away, it's just...
And as I said, the other thing they talked about, I talked to Mr. Keen, was we were 20%, because when he talked to the filling, he couldn't really figure out either, because kind of an anomaly, why, and I'm trying to say it's not really an anomaly. I think it's consistent throughout the formula. When I talked to Bassa, and when they, we talked about going down, talking to Bassa, and OSBA with Jay Smith. And it's, one of the things, when I talked to Mr. Keen, it rang back about being an anomaly, is that the agricultural, the CAUV tax, and that's what I tried to tell him is, you know, the CAUV, the agriculture, even though we're 20% agricultural, the offset of what you're going to, we're going to supposedly gain in property tax does not equal the cotton 4% because 4% of the state funding. Like we were talking about, the CAUV, you have to have 10 acres of working land. How many working farms are there in the district? A lot of them are like, "You're land." Anyway, as I said, that's a good question, Larry. Mr. Chivoni had called me on Monday night at the house. I talked to him. He left a message. I'm supposed to talk to him tomorrow. And as I said, we're just trying to let them know that it's a long process, we know, but everybody's, you know, offered different interests of why the formula's unfair. Some districts, because they have a supposedly higher capacity for their local taxpayers to raise taxes. That's supposed to be a factor in there. And that's why some other districts, I want to make sure our voice was heard as well. Anyway, we'll move on, if you're ready for new business. Okay, I'm going to go personnel first, 1 through 4. Rather, resignation of Mr. Alderman as written supervisor. The following basketball workers for the 15th season, Grace Ayers, Caitlin Lewis, and Holly Kirby, approve the following employment under a two-year contract. Retroactive, Terry May Jr., and Caitlin Stevens as substitute teacher for the remainder of the year.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, review real quick. As I say all the time, it's hard to get workers for the basketball year. We've talked about that before, if there's anything else we could do. The Terry's contract, we had just...
We somehow missed him. That's what, this is just, we should have approved him last year in May. And we somehow missed him.
And just a limited contract, right?
Limited means that it's only allowed for so long, which is two years. Classified staff is a one-year limited. He's starting a second contract, which is two years. And then after the two-year, he goes to continuing.
As far as Caitlin, thank Lisa, you recruited her, correct?
Yes, I did that this weekend.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Jennifer Roll call?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, two supplemental contracts. Approve the calling coaches, Dave Adams cross-country, Ryan Dowling soccer, Haiti Haiti of the weight room, and volunteers for the 14-15 season, Blake Grafton, Charles Ford, and Jay Lorch.
Motion. Discussion.
Please second me.
Name one.
We'll, yeah. Are we going to, I mean, have we already decided if we're having a girls' soccer team? Does that then decide it?
Yeah.
There is going to be a girls' soccer team?
Right, I thought we...
So is this, is Ryan Dowling, is he being hired as the boys' soccer coach?
Boys, yes.
Female soccer coach?
Yeah, boys, because we're still advertising the girls. That's a good point, there was a boys' soccer...
Also, that should say 15-16, not 14-15.
Yes, yes.
So Ryan will be the boys' soccer coach?
He's the boys.
And we're advertising for the girls?
The girls, yes. Thank you.
And then the weight room, is that, is that the balance of the contract that Matt designed from?
Right, and you do the...
Well, we did the posting, and you took it down this week. So, that, this is for the rest of the 14-15 school year. And then it would be 15-16 for soccer and cross-country. We haven't posted weight room for next year yet.
No, not yet.
So this should say 15-16, so Coach Haiti is doing the weight room?
For 14-15.
For 14-15.
Yeah, he's finishing out...
Matt's.
Matt's.
Matt's, yes, he is.
Any further discussion? Jennifer Roll?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Students, granted members of the class of 2015. 46 seniors are high school diploma on May 24, 2015. Approve the 15-16 school calendar, as well as the 15-16 course of study scheduling information booklet.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
How about a second?
Second.
Move into discussion.
The, well, without how many seniors there are, there's 46, look at that. The calendar as attached, once again, I've tried to tell a lot of the junior parents to make sure that we got the information out. Because the way the calendar is, you actually, school is done before Memorial Day. Usually it's not for all the students. So that means the seniors are done the Friday before, the Friday before Memorial Day. So, that, we looked at Saturday graduation, and the way we keep, Mr. Didsk, we always talk to the juniors. We want to keep everybody informed, and it's a little bit of a change. As far as the course of study scheduling information, something that we said last year, we want to do that every year. Are there any changes in the courses offered this year, Mr. Didsk? I think that pretty much, we didn't add any courses this particular year.
None of your classes.
Right, what we tried to do though, we're going to try to get the band theory, that every other year, we talked about that with the seven periods. Instead of every year, for band, some of those electives, the music theory will be offered this year, I think. We'll be able to get that in the schedule. But it's been in the course handbook for several years.
Any further discussion? Jennifer Roll?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, next one is use of facilities. And we have the one-year lease extension to Bear's Bees. The rental will be waived for the 2015-16 school year. The mental health committee, the awareness training, Hall of Fame committee, the library, the Pilates class that Rowley discussed, the Lhasa basketball, to use for their banquet, the Booster's Club for their winter sports banquet, the Booster Club for their spring sports banquet, and Mrs. Steltz for CPR.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Move into discussion. No discussion? Jennifer Roll?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Very fine Hall of Fame class as well, however, I did not talk to Mr. Guido, so I don't want to announce it. So hopefully, maybe at the next board meeting, but they do a great job, by the way. Business and operations, approve the beverage agreement with Coca-Cola for a five-year term beginning February 15. The wireless agreement with access for fiscal year 15, and the first reading of the attached policies.
Motion. Second.
Move into discussion.
See, the Coca-Cola scholarship was what, $1,300 a year for five years?
Yeah, that was nice. They went up $300 a year for us, and what else did they?
We have rebates that we put in the principal's fund each year.
Yeah, rebates, yeah, so it was a good contract.
One note, the access contract is for fiscal year 2016.
Did that go up at all from the 14?
The, yes, and unfortunately, our percentage of free and reduced is down, so we will get less E-rate money for it. And so we're going to actually pay more, a lot more this year coming up.
Is there something we can do for 2016 to maybe get the pendulum?
Andy and I have talked about that extensively, and we have some plans, so we'll see if we can get that up. Because we do believe there's a lot of students who would qualify that are not turning in the application.
Okay.
Good deal. Any further discussion? Jennifer Roll?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, and the last one, approve the attached resolution for the Leetonia district intending not to provide career tech education for the 15-16 school year.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
That was a, I don't remember which hospital that was. Oh, here I have, 487. To acquire school districts to provide career tech education to students in grades 7 through 12. The actual resolution comes from the treasurer, but it's about the financial to add those classes in, to add staff. So you have an opt-out.
Any further discussion? Jennifer Roll?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Okay, we'll move into discussion. Larry, the fourth?
I do not have anything, Mike.
Mr. Hendricks?
The only thing I have is, this winter was brutal, since I think it's done snowing now. Lots of people don't understand what goes into canceling school or making that decision in the morning. And that's a tough call to live with when you do that. So when you have 100 kids that are potentially driving in high school, and they're young drivers, and at 6 o'clock in the morning when the buses go out, and it's zero out, you do what you have to do to make sure the kids are safe. So, I've heard grumblings that didn't always make the right call. But I leave at 4:30 in the morning, and we definitely made the right call, so I just wanted... It's a tough decision to live with.
Thank you.
It's a tough decision to live with.
It is, thank you, I appreciate it.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Michael?
Rob?
No.
Okay, the only thing I'd like to say is that when you look at the use of facilities